Good afternoon, everyone. I'll call the session to order for the workshop. First item is discussion regarding the City of Landpasses Fiscal Year 2022-2023 Budget.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I do have just a few slides to run through you on the budget. Some of these actually I've recycled from previous presentations just to offer some reminders and items that we have previously included. The, we call this Budget Memo Number One. Some of you that have been through the budget process know that one of the things that I would do is I would just simply update the bottom line that we left off from the previous with modification. I do that in a memo form, but it seems like it's easier just now to throw it on a PowerPoint. So where we are, where we left off, and this is the same number generally, I think July 25th, we brought you some modifications that created about an $81,000 surplus. And then starting about, and then August 8th, we had a couple of inclusions, a couple of changes, et cetera, that we outlined to council, which left us at about a $58,000 surplus. You know, the couple of things I just want to point out, and this is all of our operating funds that we've rolled up together. Our projected year end at 590, I think council was advised previously that we didn't worry too much about projected year end as we started to work on the FY '23 budget. And as we've taken a look at it, although the salary expenses will probably go up a little bit, we're also seeing some good trends, particularly in our utilities and other areas, and some savings in other areas. So, you know, we're hopeful that our projected year end will actually be better than what we've shown on this page. The one other item that I would just want to point out, and I think this is just a reminder of Councilmember Morris's question about transfers. You see a lot of transfers on the expense side as well as the income side. And just as a reminder, those transfers come from a variety of places. So I think council may recall that we've pulled some money out of non-operating funds, the old Key Avenue Fund that had 100,000 bucks in it, or Fund 63 that had some money in it, or Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund 40, and we've actually transferred that in as income, and then also showed a corresponding expense in a lot of places. And frankly, it also shows the transfers from utilities to general, to golf course and other funds like that. So the transfers also as a reminder, we do not do them unless they're needed. So sometimes after we wrap up the year, we can show you a picture where we didn't need nearly the transfers in as income nor as expense. So those funds typically will stay in their home fund if that's the case. This is the same bottom line as the previous slide. It just segregates everything by the operating fund, general fund, water wastewater, electric, aviation, animal shelter, golf course, and the same bottom line is still a surplus of about 58,000. And so this is a slide that we've also looked at in regards to particularly those funds where we may need to take a look at rates. For example, the Water and Wastewater Fund, about a $22,000 deficit currently budgeted. Again, we've related those things since probably before July 25th in terms of some increased debt, because that's where a lot of the improvements were going. Also increased reservation water costs through the Brazos River Authority. And frankly, it's just costing more and more to operate in general on not only the water wastewater, but in other departments as well. Water wastewater also relies heavily on chemicals and botanicals, and those expenses have gone up quite a bit as well. Budget inclusions and reminders, and this is mostly a recycled slide. I think this slide was actually as part of your July 25th, or excuse me, it might have been August 8th presentation, where we talked about what was included, what was not. We did, and this is in addition to what was already in the budget. We have used retained earnings for capital items and expense, or budgeted in '22 but not expense, and that's primarily the pool liner of $150,000. We did add an additional pickup to our list of fleet needs for FY '23. We talked about water and wastewater as the potential for needing a phased increase. We didn't want to impact our customers over one big jump in one year, but, you know, taking a look at it and perhaps maybe as more meters are added and more growth happens, maybe some of those costs can be spread over more meters, thus reducing that deficit. Also employee retention compensation. That being said, the city does maintain, and we've told you that we've had a very aggressive capital program that's not only funded through operating, but also funded through the 2022 CO as well as American Rescue Plan Act funds. I think the one item that we had talked about including is a possibility was the Executime Program for, to deal with some of the HR paper pushing that we do that would keep track of time off, time sheets, clocking in and out, those sorts of things. So that's something that council may or may not want to provide direction on this evening. The big items that have changed, as we all know in the last two or three weeks, are the impacts of the interlocal agreements with the county and LISD. And we're going to be seeking your input tonight on those terms, general or specific, so that we can go back and actually craft an interlocal that is, meets close to council's direction as possible. The county emergency medical dispatch budget is budget neutral, including adjustments to our current staff for year one. And again, year one is the big ticket item. That's where we have to take a look at some software expense, a little bit of equipment expense, having to adjust salaries for additional duties, as well as to attract three new dispatchers. The LISD impact to our budget, if it remains as our starting point where we have, the school pays 100% for one and 75% of the other, that's a burdened salary expense, which means it just includes all of your benefits as well as some uniforms, et cetera. That impact to us would be about $17,800 per year. Vehicle and equipment, as per current agreement, is provided by the city at $167,000. And Chief Cummings, as we get into those agenda items, can kind of also specify those a little more closely for you. We would have to fund that from retained earnings if the terms are agreed on by council. And that's something that, again, we don't want to make the assumption that you agree on those terms. We simply want to get you to a starting point. We wanted also, again, this is a recycled slide, but we also wanted to let you know about the capital projects that have been allocated from other funds or what we would consider non-operating funds. American Rescue Plan Act, council approved the expenditures from this, and I can't even tell you when, I think it was probably May, but the upper pressure plane, business park, looping projects, relocation of utilities on South 281, emergency generation, fire department apparatus, there was a little piece that was not funded or accounted for in funding. Fund 65, which is a 2022 CO issue, that would include improvements to the wastewater plant, partial funding for the hostess house rehab, upper pressure plane improvements, wastewater shop and lab exterior improvements, water looping, sewer line replacing improvements to the Calvert Building exterior and basement. And so those, again, it lets you know that we try to use a number of other funding sources for these projects in addition to what you see funded in the operating budget. And this is, this is a slide we showed you, I believe, it was the first meeting in July or maybe it was July 25th, but we just wanted to also give you a reminder of the fund balances in operating and selected non-operating funds as of 30 June. And if we were to, I think the message here is that if we were to take just the operating ones, which is, or the ones that we're, we try to by policy, keep a minimum of 35% of our non-capital operating costs in, that would be the general fund, electric, water, wastewater. And based on that, we have about, you know, plus or minus 40% of reserve funds based on our total operating budget less capital. So we're in good shape, well within compliance of our policy. So the modifications that we want to discuss and seek your input on this evening include some of the things that we talked about with the general terms of the interlocal agreements. And as a reminder, we do have specific agenda items that we can take that up and get your feedback in more detail. But generally speaking, the 100% SRO, 75% of the second one, the budget neutral for the county in year one. You can see that there's a means to get us to maintaining a balanced budget, actually a $40,000 surplus. So if you wanted to consider other items to fund with that remaining balance, you could so under this scenario. But again, we would always defer to council to tell us what they would like to include or not include. The next steps, and again, we welcome and want your input. This evening, you'll consider a proposed tax rate, and the other way to term this is a tax rate, a not-to-exceed tax rate. We, I think staff has made a recommendation that your proposed or not-to-exceed tax rate be just below the voter approval rate. Just some information that Yvonne was able to provide, our interest in sinking will increase by a little less than half a penny. That's basically your debt. And your operating and maintenance, those are the funds that are available to support your general fund activities, your public safety, your parks, your library, et cetera. That even with a lower, with a lower tax rate will reduce your M&amp;O rate or your maintenance and operating rate by about two and a half cents. And just as a reminder, there's a lot of, you know, it's funny reading the TML newspaper headlines for cities, because everybody's saying that this town, their tax rate is going down, their tax rate is going down, their tax rate is growing down, and they're making a lot of noise about how positive that is. Taxes you pay are a function of two things, your tax rate and your valuation. So if your valuation, your tax rate can go down, but your taxes may go up just as a function of the valuation. So we just want to make sure we're very transparent when we, when we tell folks that and when we tell you as elected officials that is, because our tax rate will go down, that doesn't mean that valuation hasn't gone up. We'd ask tonight, you also scheduled a public hearing based on a recommended tax rate. September 12th would be the first reading of the ordinance approving the tax rate as well as the ordinance approving the budget. So it certainly staffs hope that we can, you know, make any changes that you want to have made tonight, particularly as it relates to the interlocal agreements and their budget impacts. But we're anxious to hear whatever comments or questions you have so that we can probably spend our last time going over this. I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mayor and Council.
Quick question. Finley, on the water looping from Live Oak, and then we have another, do we have another water looping out on 580 West?
I don't believe we have one on 580 West. The looping projects that we had identified were on Samak, Second, Fifth, and Seventh Street, but I do not believe we had one out on 580. Ryan, are you where? Nothing on the list at this time, but...
But that is one that on the radar that we need to do. And the only reason I ask that is there is going to be a certain, when we do loop those, there is going to be a certain recapture in water on this. Is that, is that correct?
It will be helpful. We did a huge step about two years ago when we extended the line from Deer Trail to Avenue B, or whatever Avenue B is called there. So that created another loop from that line there and in the vicinity, basically into the 580 Sports Complex. It was Fawn Acres, actually, but that was a big help. But again, anything additionally that we can loop, particularly on those outlining lines is going to be helpful in terms of circulating that water. Won't have to flush as much as a primary benefit.
Other comments? Do we want to talk about the HR program that's around 41,000?
Certainly can. And I think, I also, I did get a call from Councilmember Clark about the water rates, and certainly this would be an appropriate time to discuss that as well. But yes, the Executime HR program, and Ryan could answer more specific questions on that than I can, but we'd be happy to take either of those items up if you like.
Well, I think my biggest question is, is the rate increase versus some of the other things that we were doing. I'm just having a hard time trying to justify that in my mind.
Sure.
In regards to certain other spending as far as it ranks in priority, and some of those had to do with the additional paving, one of them at the wastewater plant. But that, I found out through you that that's not part of this budget. The paving for that, that comes from a reserve account, right?
Correct.
For anyone following, can you say what that new rate is, the proposed rate?
Yes. What we're proposing is 2.25 as a readiness-to-serv increase, as well as 10 cents a thousand gallons. So for example, I think my, my house, we use between 8,000 and 10,000 gallons a month. So our bill would go up to 2.25 plus 10 cents a thousand gallons, so it'd be...
$2.35?
Yeah. Well, $2, $3.25.
We had a spreadsheet with all those numbers on it.
Correct. And we can get you those numbers as well if you don't have them, but...
When's the last time we had a rate increase like that?
Yvonne knows the answer to that. 2018?
I believe that's right.
And the purpose of that is because the water's costing more, so we're trying to bring it up to where, right?
Correct, yes.
And do you think, of course, nobody knows, but hopefully increase in growth will, will help us not to have to deal with that next year.
I think what we had talked about is, Monica, is my deal working here? Keep going, keep going. Stop. One of the things that we referenced is that this may be one of two bites that would be necessary to bring that department budget back into balance. We can certainly be more aggressive, but I think it makes sense to, let's see if we can add some meters, see if we can improve some of the, some of the other costs, but we may have to take a look at this again, just to be transparent with council.
And so, so like in your household, your rate on average for a year, you're going to pay another $40 that year, is what you're saying, for your household?
Oh, yes. It would be 3, 3.35, 3.25 times 12. Correct.
How many meters have we added to the city in the last couple of years?
I would have to pull an old budget report. We did that not too long ago for you, but we've...
I would pull about 30, 3,600.
30.
3,600.
Oh, 3,600?
Total.
Total.
If somebody has a end-of-year report, like tucked under their desk, I've got a chart in the back of that that has a number of meters that we've increased over the last five years, but we'll certainly get that to you. It's not, it's not a huge number, but it is very steady.
Well, I think my main concern is those, what I thought was coming from different funds is, has been explained to me to a point that the funding of the other comes out of some, they're not reserves, but it came from money left over on another project.
It's, they are either funds, the two examples I showed you were the American Rescue Plan Act funds and the 2022 CO funds. So those are, those are the, and particularly on the CO funds, one of the reasons is because we continue to make improvements in our water wastewater plant like we should, but that costs money, and a lot of times that money comes from debt. So that amount of debt also increases for the water wastewater.
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand when TCEQ comes to the door. We've dealt with them before, so we don't want to, we don't want to get behind on that.
And certainly, if you think something's more important than something else, we can trade them out. We've tried to, you know, I think, I like the fact that we can continue to put more money into streets. It's a very visible improvement. It's a very, you know, it's something, people don't like potholes on their streets.
I don't disagree in that. I would ask the importance on the work done here on this building. As far as the timeline on that, how quickly were you intending to get into this?
We've asked, because the, the lighting package is fairly straightforward, we've asked for that, if we could at least get some baseline specifications for the lighting package in the basement, and then we'll put together the wall finish. And frankly, I don't think it will take as much money nearly as what we have allocated or what we have earmarked for.
Well, I'd certainly like to see some improvements out front.
You bet.
For the public.
Is looping on, on 580 West, is that, is that on the horizon somewhere?
We have talked about that, but I would probably defer to Ryan and Van on that.
It is something that we look at, because we need to tie that last piece. We're always flushing over there 580 Sports Complex. Most recently, we've had help from contractors throwing up water trucks under the flushing doors. But I think with the upper pressure plane study and some of those factors, again, that looping piece, as we keep going further and further out, you know, it's going to be a great, a big help from contractors.
Do you know how much water we're flushing out of that on a weekly basis?
We do, but I don't have the numbers in front of me. Van keeps track of that.
I know it's a pretty substantial amount.
Oh, absolutely.
Is anyone interested in discussing the HR program for 40-some thousand? Ryan's here, he could walk through it with you.
Can I give you a quick overview?
Sure. What's going on, Ryan?
Hello, Mayor and Council. The software we've been looking at ties into our Ncode system, which is what we handle all of our finance, our utilities out of, so it ties directly into that. It's Tyler, same company that provides us that software, so they're telling us fairly seamless. Right now, we're spending, I kind of tried to put some rough numbers together, you know, as a group, we're probably spending between 20 to 30 hours a month, and that's Vicky Towers' time in HR. That's all the managers reviewing folks' time off, signing the time off paperwork, signing and reviewing time sheets. So there's a lot of time spent and a lot of paperwork, and we're trying to kind of get away from, from, as Councilman Clark said, killing trees. But where we can go back and we can reference things, but tying into that Ncode piece, so everything about that employee resides in there. So their time off, their sick leave, PTO, all those things are in that system, and it will automatically pull that in to their time sheets. So if they take time off or they request time off, it's a simple click for that manager supervisor on a computer screen to approve it, instead of going through, you know, three people's desk and they're having to handwrite it, you know, and the time, I mean, the return on the investment or the ROI is probably realistically between three and four years, it'll pay for itself, just based on people's time, you know, having to do the paperwork process. Whereas, for example, in my role, is all the groups in public works come in, and there's some other, and there's some other staff members that I approve their time, building inspection, and a couple other ones, I could go in to a quick screen and just glance them, and if I see something that looks off, or if I knew somebody took off this week or took off an hour here, I could go in, change that, edit it, send it back to them, get them to sign off virtually, and then I could click everybody else with one click and approve. And so, you know, I probably spend every two weeks signing time sheets. I know I spend probably at least an hour, you know, if not more sometimes, going through each time sheet and all the time off. So it's kind of a neat program, and that's one piece. The second piece of it is, it's time clocks out in some of the areas like public works, water wastewater, where folks would basically have a badge and a proximity reader, so when you get close to that, it will check you in, and you can kind of manage time like that. So that kind of helps take away some of the paperwork that those folks are having to do as well. So all staff would have some way of clocking in digitally.
Is it a software project or programs that can be updated?
Yes. Yeah, it can definitely be updated.
For the future?
For the future, yeah. I think, and Monica may could speak to this a little bit better, because I'm not as familiar with Ncode when we move to the cloud, but once we move to the newer system, it'll all be in the cloud, so it'll be getting updates all the time, yeah, and it'll interface.
I just want to make sure IT was familiar with it, and it was available. So many of those turn around in a year or two outdated, and you can't, can't get support for them.
Right. I think that's why we felt like this was really a good program, just because it tied into what we have, and they already have a plan moving forward into the cloud, so it would make it kind of seamless for us, you know, at some point.
How much is the initial investment?
The initial is about 41,000, and that's time clocks, you know, the computer software, some development hours. So there's going to be some need to make it all talk back and forth between what we have now in Ncode versus, you know, once they set that program up, so it's feeding folks, you know, time off and those types of things, and then talking back. So there'll be a little development as well.
What do you, so what do you foresee cost-wise with, after the initial investment, how quick there's going to be more?
After the initial investment, I wanted to say the yearly fee, do you remember that, Monica, what it was? I wanted to say it was, I think it, yeah, I think six months to get it going. But I think it was somewhere around...
1,800.
1,800, I think.
1,800, yearly after the first six months?
Yeah.
And then any other kind of equipment that's going to need to be bought for the remote?
The card reader equipment, and again, IT's looked into that. There's a badge reader piece that, depending on which way we went, Kristi and IT has been looking into that as well as Monica, and they've come up with some quotes. Those are fairly minimal cost-wise to do all the badging, you know, to put your, your face on the front of the badge and your department or whatever we want it to say, and then, you know, it'll have that remote read access on the back of it. So that part's pretty minimal, but yeah, that's it. Other than the time clocks and the badges, I don't know that there's anything else we would need to purchase.
And the time clocks would be about how much, you think?
The time clocks themselves, I think the software was about 22,000 to 24,000, and the time clocks are about, I think they were about 2,500 apiece.
Oh, that's, that's part of that initial?
Yeah, but that was all part of that 41, yeah.
Gotcha.
Kind of wrapped up into one number. There any other questions? We'll get into the 21st century.
You think we'll be hit with another like 20 or 40,000 as part of this HR software before we get the return on investment in three to four years?
I don't think so, because I think once we move to the cloud, it should still be that, you know, hopefully yearly maintenance fee, you know, once they move us, other than what we have to pay for Ncode to migrate, I don't know what that would be. Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
What do you need from us, Finley?
You will have the opportunity to provide formal action or formal consideration on the water rates in the regular agenda. So if there's some reason you want to make a change there, we can do that. Do you want us at least as a thumbs up or thumbs down to consider including the Executime software in the budget? Anything else I could answer for you related to the FY23 budget?
Everybody good?
On the SRO and EMS, you're just going to see what it looks like after a year and...
We're I think on the...
We've gotten rid of this first year.
I think the term for both of them is probably going to be in the in the neighborhood of five years, probably corresponding with, for example, the ambulance contract that the county has with Hamilton. And I would envision the school, you might be able to go a shorter term, a three-year term, if you wanted to consider something like that. I don't I don't like going through this process every year, but I think three to five years is a reasonable, and I think with the county, you could go five years. I think the questions that I have are what does the county contract look like, and what is your input and what that looks like from year two to five? We know what year one is going to look like. And so I'm looking for a little guidance when we get to that portion on the county. But the assumptions that we've made in the budget and the we have accounted for or made certain assumptions that have translated into modifications to the budget that you see before you. So we're willing to do whatever ever you'd like.
We've got that at four and five of the workshop session after Mr. Iker's presentation, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
As well as on the regular agenda for formal consideration.
Anything else? Thank you, Finley. Next item is discussion and presentation of the Parks and Recreation Department budget. Mr. Iker.
Good evening, Mayor Council. First, I'd like to apologize for not being able to be at the special session last Monday. We had a family emergency that required my presence. So honestly, our budget's pretty boring this year. It looks pretty boring to me. It's there's not a lot of increases with the exception of supplies, cost of maintenance materials and things like that across the board. Obviously, the increase in salaries, which was greatly appreciated by all of our employees, thank y'all for that. We do have twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted for a new twenty-five horse tractor for the Parks Department. We've got thirty-five thousand dollars budgeted to replace a two-thousand model half-ton pickup at the cemetery, and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace the pool liner at Hannah Pool. And it's it's kind of deceptive to look in here and see that we don't have any projects budgeted, because we've also, we're still working on the skate park, Hostess House, and the pending rock wall removal at Hannah Springs. So I don't really have anything specific to point out other than those things unless y'all have questions.
I'll commend you on the 580 ball field. When I go by there, it's bright green trim. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Can you give us an update on skate park?
I can. Actually, we just today, we received the specs on the the pad for the park, and hopefully we've, I think there was a couple of requirements that Ryan emailed them back on that they should have us in the next few days, and then we can begin getting quotes on the construction for the pad.
So I thought we already had a quote on the construction for the pad?
Unofficial.
Unofficial, okay. So we're not locked into that deal?
No, we're not. We're not. We need to get at least three quotes, and if those quotes are over fifty thousand dollars, then it would be sealed bids, but.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Next item is discussion regarding terms of the school resource officer, SRO, inter local agreement with Lampasses Independent School District.
Jody, are you ready? Thought I might get him up here just because he'll have to jump in and either correct what I say or give you some additional information. The next two agenda items relate to very similar items. There are interlocal agreements, and the terms of those interlocal agreements bind between the city of Lampasses and in one case, the LISD, and in another case, the county of Lampasses. Those services that are being provided through these interlocal agreements are being provided through Chief Cummings' office and the Police Department. One, in terms of providing school resource or additional school resource officers to the school, and the other is to provide emergency dispatch service to the county. And Mayor, pardon me, I thought I'd maybe just combine them in some regards as the intro. The first item that we'd ask you to look at, and on both of these items, really what we want to do is validate the terms, the the basic terms of these agreements. I like to at least validate or make sure that I'm not going left while y'all are going right on some of these. But for the for the SRO agreement, we currently have a an agreement in place that was executed in two thousand and eighteen that outlines, I think, pretty well the SRO agreement for the current three SROs. We'd use that contract as a basis for the addition of two more. And the assumptions that we've made through the budgeting process is that the burdened costs, and again, what I mean by burdened, I mean, not only their salary, but their benefits, their health insurance, their boots, their uniforms, training. What else am I missing, Chief?
All the equipment on their body, all the equipment in their cars, everything, the reaching materials, the vehicles.
But we would take care of the equipment. What we're asking, the piece that the school would take on would basically be the salary, the burden salary, including uniforms.
The foot of overtime, the extra minutes.
Right. That, listen, again, as a starting point, has been they would pay a hundred percent of that for one and seventy-five percent of that for the other. Currently, of the three school resource officers that we have, the school pays a hundred percent for one, and the city pays seventy-five percent for the other two. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't have something for those two officers to do, you know, once they're if they're not being paid for the school. They actually, that is something that has benefited the department in terms of the ability to cover empty slots during covered during vacations in the summertime, that sort of thing. So there has been some some justification and some benefit to the city for those seventy-five percent officers. The other item that we wanted to include in writing with the school was the fact that during non-contact days, and I'm talking primarily summer holidays, when we have a need, we just want to reinforce the fact that, hey, these are our officers, these are our employees, and if we do have a need for them in consideration of whatever else we provide to them, equipment, vehicles, fuel, et cetera, that we would use that. And and at least the administration didn't have any issue with that. The other thing that Yvonne brought up as a potential change in the terms was right now, they reimburse us once a year in June or July?
In June.
In June. And Yvonne says, you know, it'd be nice if maybe they paid us upfront and we did a true-up at the end of the year, or something like that. So that's something that certainly would would be, I think, a term that would be beneficial to the city. We certainly wouldn't have a problem with.
Finley, may I ask, could you or Jody want to explain why the city, the ISD only pays seventy-five percent for the other officers? There's a hundred for one, and there will be a hundred for two.
Sure, I think I think Jody can probably explain it a little bit better, but it's it has to do with basically the contact days of school, I think. And then then the need as they added the third one for more year-round supervision and other duties. But.
Chief, if you might, might explain that better.
Sure. Best I can remember, we've had an SRO program since nineteen ninety-four. We've discussed this lately at the office, and Tim Ryan was our first SRO. And that was through a grant program that lasted for a couple of years with the government to integrate school resource officers into the school. At some point over time, and I can't remember exactly because I wasn't as interested in his administration back then in my young career, but I know the school added a second officer. And again, we paid the twenty-five percent because we could use about two people during the summer, because there's lots of vacation and training that we on our side try to get in during the summertime. And so it helped to have a little bit of extra help during the summer to spread it out, so the rest of our officers could go to school and training. And when we added the third officer four or five years ago, I guess, someone just someones decided, it wasn't, I wasn't part of that decision, that we really couldn't suck up an extra one during the summer, because there probably wasn't a need for us to have a third officer during the summer. And the school agreed to pay a hundred percent of that third officer. So as we're here now wanting to add the two, we're just trying to make the decision whether we can go ahead and pay seventy-five percent of that third, and they'll pay a hundred percent of two of them, and then we probably can use that third officer during the summer. A lot more expectations with us in general, and we've been a little short this summer. So we certainly could have used it this summer because of the shortage of officers. So I think it's just a judgment call. There's not a way to write that down exactly and say, this is how we're going to use those extra officers during the summer. But I assure you, we'll put them to work, and we'll make sure everybody's out there doing something.
Want to go back and ask for a hundred percent, or for the school district to pay a hundred percent of both salaries that work over in the equipment on there?
I'll leave that to the administration.
I had one other question, a real quick question. It had to do with the overtime, because right now you said that the school reimburses in June, and you said something about they the school also takes care of the overtime that the officers have, because there's all those night events and things, and like they go to football games. And so those officers are working longer than their normal hours. So if they were going to have to pay in advance instead of after, how would that work?
I guess that would be the true-up, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
Partial and then true it up.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, at what point do you think it would be more practical if the school is requesting more school resource officers to start talking about their own department just at the school?
Again, that's not an exact, and you hear that talked about quite often. For instance, I know Gatesville ISD and their police department was recently talking about starting their own police department, because they have one at every campus, and they're they're exactly like us, high school, middle school, three elementaries right now. Last I heard, they were thinking about maybe going with private security. I don't think it's decided for sure. I think they have their SROs this year under the police department, but they've been knocking that around. Liberty Hill went with their own school police department a couple of years ago, and they started off with only about five officers to include a chief. So, you know, that that is a huge burden for a small ISD to take on. And LISD has indicated to us that that they have no interest in that right now, as long as we're willing to continue to try to help them in some kind of a format. I just can't tell you at what point that would be good for them. You know, we don't mind doing it at the police department. It's it's a lot of work for us. But also, you know, if you had an ISD there, and they had something that required more than what they could handle, we would always be helping them. And I would think that that police department there would always be helping us, because a lot of things overlap. So I think till it gets to the point where someone on the the calculating side of the money decides we just have to do it this way, I would like to continue to try to work with them, that being up to y'all and the school board, how the pay works out. Of course, that's y'all's business. But it's most beneficial to us right now, as far as the police department, I think, to try to get it done the way we're doing it and adjust as we go, at least for a while.
Chief?
Chief, one question. Want to go ahead?
I I just, that officer finishes his shift just with normal duties, whatever's needed after school's out.
I'm sorry, Randy?
That officer that's at the school is, does he finish his regular shift with the department with the department, maybe having to do traffic control or or something else?
Occasionally, yes. And and again, to go back to what we were just discussing, it's beneficial to us often. If we're shorthanded, we have a special project, something happens in town at that time of day, they can stay over, and then they're on our clock, and we pay that extra hour or two or whatever to go do something that's unrelated to the school, because they're already there, they're in uniform, they've got their car, and they can come help immediately, if not come in early that day to cover a day shift. If someone calls in at five o'clock and can't be there for their six o'clock day shift, and we know we have coverage coming in at eight, one of those SROs can come in, they pick up a little overtime to work two hours of regular patrol, and then go immediately to the school when we've got some coverage.
And that that's to our benefit?
Yes, sir, it is. And of course, we keep up with the time sheet, so we're paying for, you know, where they need to go.
Understood.
Yeah.
Summertime, when the kids are going to summer school, are are we required to have an SRO onsite then, or do we need one?
Two questions. Required, I'm not positive. I don't think the school's required to have one, but I could be wrong. But need one, like right now, again, we have three SROs, one hundred percent of one of them is paid for by the school. And that happens to be Sergeant Sheldon's position is what was agreed upon most recently. And they worked him really hard this summer with all of the stipulations coming down from the state government over all the security, all kinds of things. In fact, I believe he checked every door on every every building, every outbuilding, every storage shed as part of his requirements, literally, and mapped it out this summer. And there was a handful of other things he did. So they got their money's worth out of him this summer. But in general, we always have them, Sergeant Sheldon knows the hours of summer school, he knows the special programs, and he makes a point to go around during the day, stay in touch with everybody, be seen, see if they need help, and then in between, he helps us out.
So so you feel comfortable with three SROs during the summertime?
We will put them to work. For instance, you know, this summer, if we would have had extra help, because we were shorthanded on patrol, because again, we've got three in training at the moment, and we're advertising for a fourth. So we've been short, and we can use the help this summer. But if we hadn't been short, we would have put people two people in the park on foot patrol and help Chris out all summer with this criminal mischief we've had. You know, there's always something to do, and we look for stuff and try to make sure that we're not sitting idle, whether it's the SROs from the school or it's our regular officers. We do our best to keep busy.
Got you. Okay.
Other questions, comments? Pretty much the same for the county as well, interlocal agreement?
Slightly different. I think our concern with on the county EMS dispatching is what happens in years two through five, two through five. I think when this was first brought up, we had tried to warn council that there may be some financial participation. And the county has certainly stepped up, and they have some funds that they can use for this through the feds. However, in year two through five, I didn't know if council wanted to consider a a slight participation for the three dispatchers that we would have to bring on. And and again, as a starting point, thirty, twenty percent would be about thirty-five to forty thousand dollars. But again, I give that back to the council to provide us direction on.
Any thoughts on the sharing of some costs?
I was wondering, you you just said that, I'm sorry.
Randy was.
Oh, I just want to make sure they pay their their fair share of what their responsibilities are. That that should include the dispatcher.
Thank you. My question was, you just said that the the county has some federal funding that's going to take care of this. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
I believe they're planning on using ARP funds. That's my understanding.
Okay, so that funding is available this year, but it is not available in years two through five?
Correct. And also, this year is the heavy year. This is where we have to pay for software and some hardware, not very minimal. We also have to adjust salaries as well for additional duties, et cetera.
Okay.
Something I'm wondering about is, when we look at the county's contribution to our fire department, is what, around twenty thousand a year?
Twenty-two.
And how much work do y'all do out in the county, Chief? Do you mind telling me right now?
It's about thirty-five percent of the calls, Chief, last time I thought.
Yes, we're about three hundred called out.
Think that's worth more than twenty-one thousand?
Absolutely.
So I think it's like one of those things where we weigh out. We should be working together, the city and the county, of course. But I think we kind of need to even out some of this. And so what is staff built that the city needs to devote towards the county?
I I think I think a conversation with the county is in order, and with the school district is in order in a roundtable format.
Right.
We've talked about that. We've been so busy trying to deal with these interlocal agreements. We've talked about that, we've been so busy trying to deal with these interlocal agreements, we haven't even put that message out yet. But I, I wouldn't disagree with you, Councilmember Morris, at all.
And Judge Royer actually came to council and, and talked about everything we're talking about right now, gave us a heads up.
Correct.
We've still yet to see anyone from LISD come to a council meeting.
And they, they would have been here tonight, but they have their own meeting currently, yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of, of us getting through this first year. And if it's a five-year term contract, we need the ability to be able to negotiate after that first year.
Maybe what we could do is set up year one specifically and then set a timeline to negotiate year two through five. And, and again, with, in good faith, with the understanding that, hey, there's some benefits from having Chief Smith here with his apparatus. And there's some benefits, obviously, for us dispatching for you.
I think that's something we've talked about before, we're sitting down with county commissioners and having a roundtable with them.
Sure.
And I think fire needs to be included in that.
That, in my opinion, it would be for all of us to get together, county, ISD, and the city on a regular basis.
So I think what I'm hearing from council is particularly on the county, maybe we're very specific in the, maybe it is a, a multi-year term. But we're very specific with year one and then they set a, a target date to talk about year two through five based on the.
With the intention of everyone working together.
Right, yes.
That would be my thought.
Thank you both.
Mayor and council, you do have, both of these items do have a action item or a formal consideration on the regular agenda that talk about if you want to direct us to go ahead, J.C. and I, to work together on the interlocal. Again, I think the, the big deal, I, I think the, the EMS is somewhat clear to, to staff. We can, I think we could run with that all right, depending on what your comfort level is. On the SRO, if you had an idea of, you know, man, we really need to ask for a hundred percent for both of them. Or we need, a hundred percent and seventy-five percent is okay. That's, that's the big question I think I have for council. And if you can answer that question, that is something else that we could run with, so.
What kind of timeline are you on on that, or needing an answer?
We, we'd like to bring you back, we'd either like to finalize and negotiate and finalize administratively or bring it back to you at the next meeting.
Well, and the two cruisers that are in new business today, those would be two of those SROs, wouldn't, wouldn't they?
That's correct.
And that, and that commitment would be somewhere around a hundred and seventy thousand and we need to order them now to get them in May, don't we?
Correct.
Okay.
That's accurate.
So when I'm saying like, if, if you go back to the table and say, hey, can y'all cover a hundred percent of both? It's not that we're not covering anything.
Oh, no, and, and I think one of the things, one of the charges that I gave Chief Cummings was, you know, and we're not counting undershirts. But, you know, what, everything, we want to know what every single cost is. And I, so I think that's the one thing that he was very thorough in and paints a very clear picture of what the city's contribution to this is.
Anything else? Thank you. Next item is discussion regarding any item on the regular agenda. Does anyone wish to discuss anything? If not, do we want to take a short break or continue on? Okay, let's go on. Call to order the regular session and Chief Cummings, if you don't mind, giving us a prayer, please?
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you so thankful tonight for the wet ground outside. It's greatly appreciated and we thank you what you brought to us last week. And not to be greedy, but we would sure appreciate a little gentle more if you could bring it our way. And we also ask that you be with us tonight, budget time, important decisions. Help us to all be able to communicate freely and openly, good decisions to be made for the betterment of all your people. We ask, Lord, that you watch over us, be with us in safety, forgive us of our sins until we can meet again. In Jesus' name, amen.
Okay. We have presentations and proclamations. We do have a service anniversary for Loopy Charping. Fifteen years. Next item, public hearings, citizen comments. Citizen comment who desires to comment on a matter that is not included on the agenda may do so at this time. The city council may not deliberate on items presented under this agenda item. There are none. Citizen comments, anyone who desires to address the city council on a matter that is included on the agenda may do so at this time. We have a public hearing to receive citizen input on items being considered in the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. Anyone wish to comment on the budget? Next item is minutes, discussion and possible action regarding the approval of minutes of the regular meeting on August eighth and, August eighth, 2022.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Davis, were you absent that meeting? I have one abstention. Discussion and possible action concerning the approval of minutes of the special meeting on August fifteenth, 2022?
Didn't see any corrections, again, recommend approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
The consent agenda consists of one item, discussion and possible action concerning the July 2022 investment report?
Didn't see any corrections, recommend approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is board reports, fire department monthly report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It is always good to be here and tonight is no exception. I do apologize for earlier, I misunderstood what it was you were asking for and when you were asking for that. Anyways, tonight, you're going to be thrilled and dazzled with another fine report that we put together from the fire department. I promise there's no things that are flying in all over the place or anything like that. For those of you that have seen this report before, I apologize because it is basically the same. For those of you that have not seen it, it's not all that riveting. We are the fire department and that's pretty much what we do. Monica's going to help me out with this, with my little bit of IT experience and a PowerPoint presentation, so, or do you want me to do it? Oh, looky there. Where's my clicker? There you go. All right, so when you think of the fire department, what do you typically think of? The fire department, most of the time for most people, they think of a parade. And we do quite a bit of parades around here and I'm very excited about that. I love being in the parades and probably after next June, we'll love it even more. Hopefully by spring ho of next year, we'll have our brand new fire truck in there. And I should get back with them and see if we can pummel in some different ways to spray people while we're driving down the road. And in the tradition of spring ho, but we'll probably keep it the way it is. But we obviously are in parades, we're in the Christmas parade and the spring ho parade. And I actually have a picture in my office of the very first Christmas parade that I was here for. And I've got a picture with Santa Claus and I love that. Nothing more exciting than a, than a fire truck bringing Santa Claus into town. I think that always does really well. There we go. Maybe. Okay, fire engines, we talked about that too. I'm working on it, give me time. Oh, I, I might need it, give, Lord, this is. Okay, so another thing we do, fire safety and public education. Thank you. Fire safety and public education, we do quite a bit of this and this is really something that I do love. When you look at the schools around here and what we get to do, we get to actually make a difference in one thousand six hundred and sixty-six kids and children. We get to get with them, we talk about exit, exit drills in the home, stop, drop and roll, finding a meeting place, those types of things. And those are the best, those are the best things to ever get involved with. We love going to schools and that number does include Teller Creek Elementary. A lot of people have discussions sometimes and go, well, Teller Creek, you know, it's out there in Coppers Cove. Here's how I get around this. That principal calls up Coppers Cove Fire Department, Coppers Cove Fire Department is given a chance to go out there. They allow us to go out there. We don't take a whole crew out there or anything like that. I go out there, I'll get some of the volunteers to go out there, I get with Kempner Fire Department to go out there. But we spend time with them and we have a career day and we go over those things with them that are just as important to the kids that are here. Because those same kids live in the city, live in the county, they're going to go to the middle schools here and they're also going to go to the high schools here. So that's a very important thing of what we do also. The fire marshal's office, man, we've changed fire marshals in the last year. I thought Ronnie Withers was great at what he did. A lot of people thought, oh my gosh, here comes the fire marshal. I don't know that that's going to change with John Paul Harris. It depends on what side of the aisle you're on on that. You may be just as upset when John Paul Harris comes to the door as a fire marshal as what you were with Ronnie, with Ronnie Withers. But we do try to make a difference with the fire marshal's office and we'll go a little bit more into what he does here in a little bit. These are some things that we actually do that you may not come to front and center. Everything we just talked about, from August first of twenty-one to August first of twenty-two. And we run that report in August because that's, that's the year that we're given. We could do it from whatever time you want to, but we're going to go from August to August. We have one thousand four hundred and forty-three calls for service and that includes out in the county also. And I've got a sheet later on that we can look at where we'll break that down as far as what does go into the county, what actual calls go in there and everything like that. But we made fourteen hundred and forty-three calls this last year. And those range in everything from, from car wrecks to emergency medical calls to gas leaks to accidents and, and fires. So we do quite a bit as far as that goes. And then the last thing that we probably do that you don't know that much of what we do, we do a lot of training. We do a lot of training, whether it's training with volunteers on Tuesday nights or whether it's training with each personnel throughout the, throughout the day. There's probably two or three hours of training that happens every single day, just based on company training with each group, with A-shift, B-shift or C-shift. We log that many training hours, whether that's starting equipment, whether that's reviewing equipment, how to run it, chainsaws, rotary saws, that type of stuff. Doing actual cutting on something, getting the, the tools out, the, used to, you'd say the, the hydraulic tools, but they're not hydraulic anymore. Now they're all battery operated, the jaws of life, the spreaders, the cutters and those types of things. We do that on a regular basis also. We have a guy, ironically enough, is up in Terren- at Terren College this, this whole week for swift water rescue. Hopefully, we don't have any of that while he's gone, but we also have other peoples here that are trained for that. That's something that we've chosen to focus on, is swift water rescue. I hope he's enjoying it because it's a lot of rain up in Terren College and they're going rain or shine. And like they say, if it's swift water, it's probably going to be raining while you're doing it. So they're going to practice like they preach. So this is how we are currently organized right here. Last year, we did reorganize with y'all's blessing. There's me, the fire chief, and those are the three people that I have working for me, three deputy chiefs. One's a fire marshal, one's the administrative deputy chief and one's the operational chief. That would be John Paul Harris as the fire marshal, the deputy chief of administration is Joe Adams and the operational chief is Corey Griner. And those three gentlemen all have their little area that they do. The funny thing is, is I have more help now than what I ever had and I'm busier now than what I've ever been. If you want to go into my schedule for this week, I've got a meeting about the eclipse in 2024. I've got a meeting with countywide people and I've also got a meeting at the school at the high school tomorrow. Those are all the different things that are involved in what we do day in and day out. And I didn't plan it heavy for this week knowing that I was going to be here to do this, I don't think that far in advance. It's just how it lined out. So the fire marshal, what does the fire marshal actually do? Well, we know he goes around and he, he inspects all the businesses and that type of stuff throughout the city. He does background investigations when we have new employees. We're in the process right now of trying to hire one person to fill a slot of somebody that left. We do a very intense background on them. They have thirty-eight pages that they fill out about who you are, where you came from, what you did, what makes you tick, all those types of things. John Paul Harris does a background on every person that does that. He goes beyond looking at the packet. I can give you all that same packet and we can all look at it. He's going to contact everybody that they put down and he's going to go several different degrees into that. Give me another name, give me another name, give me another name, trying to find out all that goes on. Because we want to make sure that we hire credible people to work here. He does any type of internal affairs investigations that we have. Not that we do stuff in there that we need internal affairs investigations, but if we get a complaint from the outside, we do that. We look into it, make sure what happened, what needs to be done, what are the things that we can do better? So he does those types of things also. He also looks at the fires that we have, try to determine how they, what caused them. Was it anything that was purposeful? You know, he does a full investigation on that, writes up a report, just like you would against any other crime, all right? He does plans review with the city building official. When they submit a neighborhood review, when they submit, hey, I want to build this building. He is the representative from the fire department that makes sure that all these drawings and all these plans that they meet the fire code. So he has a lot that he has on his plate and it, and we stay pretty busy doing that. And then, of course, he's also an on-call duty chief. Deputy chief of administration, probably the easiest thing to describe Joe Adams in this part is, is everything that I do, he's there to back me up on it. He's there to take those things, he's there to go with them, he's there, he's detail oriented. He's worked since October on getting out all of our new SOGs and our rules and regulations. And we're pushing those out a little bit at a time. But this is how we run as a department. These are the rules that we have, not just in the city, but within the fire department. These are our standard operating procedures when we get on the fire ground. When we get on some type of a carbon monoxide call, if we get on a gas leak. We have a playbook of how they're going to respond and what they're going to do on these types of calls. So that's what another thing he's doing. He's involved in the purchasing and the finance of it. He's involved in the planning and logistics of it. When are we sending Morse Wilkins up to Terren College? When are we going to pay for that? How are we going to get him in a hotel? All these things like that. Where do we get our bunker gear? When are we going to get it? He's the guy that's involved in the budget and the planning and everything like that. He also helps me with the emergency management planning, with the annexes, with A, communications, how are we going to do this, warning. All those things that detail how we respond as a city to any emergency that's beyond what just the fire department is or what's beyond just what the police department is. If we have like winter storm Yuri, as it went out, how did we respond to that? Did we have some things put in place prior to that? Absolutely. We don't just sit around and make it up as we go along. Now, there are some things that we go, I don't know, what do you think, Mr. City Manager, does that sound like a good idea? Absolutely, and then we roll with it. That does happen, but we do have a playbook of how we're going to respond to things. Last but not least, as I already said, he helps me with, with what I do day in and day out. He kind of takes my place when I'm not here and then he's also a duty chief. The last guy in this puzzle is deputy chief Griner. He's the operations chief. So as far as working with the shift guys, he is the one that's there with them day in and day out, making sure that we have consistency from A-shift to B-shift to C-shift. We all know how to pre-connect the same way. We all know what we want to pump to those hose lines. All the training and everything like that that goes on with all three shifts, he coordinates every single bit of that. He's out there developing standards and best practices, how we're going to respond to those emergency incidents. He and Chief Adams share an office. They are in there. They're talking about things. Chief Adams is taking notes. He's putting it in, into the computer. We're spitting it out. How are we going to do these things? What works, what doesn't work. It's a constant review process inside of that office. He also worked with outside agencies to coordinate emergency response on major events. Now, we were talking about mutual aid out into the county earlier. We also get mutual aid for us. So it's not just we're going out there for them. Hey, they're coming in for us. And they do a lot of stuff with it. If we have a structured fire at just a single-family residence, it's very manpower-intensive. It is very hot in the summer and it's very cold in the winter. But it takes a lot of man-hours to, to bring that thing to total mitigation to where we can leave there and be confident of what we do. And we do mutual aid Kempner. We do mutual aid Little Meetin'. We do mutual aid Addamsville. They're all great folks to work with, and that's what Captain Griner is out there doing. Once a month, he meets with all the, all the county chiefs. I go to that also. And, and we talk about things and how are we going to do things? How can we help y'all? How can y'all help us? So he's part of that problem too, I mean, part of that solution also. Then he also works with, being an on-call duty chief. So we take a rotation to make sure that we have all the available manpower that we can. There's always some type of an administrative chief on call. We take a week at a time. I'm the guy this week. So if my back pocket starts buzzing and I say, "I got to leave," I really do have to leave it. I'm not just at a bad spot. But we respond to all the, all the structured fires. We respond to grass fires. We go there and we provide an incident command for that. We, we try to get there and be in command and make sure that everything goes well with those things. So going to shift operations, if you look at the operational personnel, we do have three shifts, A-shift, B-shift, and C-shift. I don't know why it's not one, two, or three. It's, it's A-shift, B-shift, and C-shift. You go back through the history of the fire department, they typically had A-shift and B-shift. They decided that they wanted to have two days off instead of one, so they made C-shift. And what they did was everybody that A-shift didn't want and B-shift didn't want, they put them over on C-shift. And that tradition is held, so that's why C-shift is less looked upon. You're laughing. I, I think that's a true story. I can imagine that's how it went down. But anyways, Captain Griner works with them. We've got a captain, we've got, or Chief Griner, I'm sorry. He was a Captain Griner for a long time. Chief Griner works with the three captains, the three drivers, and three firefighters to make sure that they have all the training that they need and all the understanding that they need with that. Now, this is from August to August, '21 to '22, right here. And you can see the majority of the calls that we make are rescue, emergency, medical calls. That's going to be your wrecks. That's going to be your eye can't breathe, your heart attacks, and those types of things. And that's a vast majority of what we make, 70%. That is probably a little bit lower than a majority of fire departments. And the reason being that I can get and see that is because we respond, we respond so much out into the county on grass fires. If you're in Dallas, you're not making near as many grass fires as what we're making. Your, your percentage is going to be way higher on the, on the EMS section there. Okay? But all those, all those different incidents up there, that's a big group in that. Where you see fire, that's all the fires that we have. That's not just vehicle fires, dumpster fires, car fire. You know, I mean, we break it down to the nitty-gritty. So if you want to know very specific information on those, I can tell you that. This brings it a little bit. This tells you numbers in there instead of percentages in there. It gives you an idea of what we had as far as just fires, but still, it's 124 fires. We did not have 124 structured fires. That's a lot of fires. Those are vehicle fires, dumpster fires, grass fires, structured fires, all fires put together. We'll go through the next one. Incidents by time of day. I get a lot of people that go, "Hey, what's the busiest time of day?" Well, there you go, right there to tell you that from 2:00 to 3:00 is the busiest time of day. Why that is, I have no idea. But, but there's your, a year's worth of data. This last year, 2:00 to 3:00 was the busiest time of day. I did not put one together for the day of the week, but I, I can tell you that, you know, Sundays are a little bit slower usually. But by the time everybody gets out of church, Sunday perks right up. Our, our average call, I mean, we're, we're up to about four calls a shift now. If you look at just the last month, we're a little bit over four calls per shift. And, and that's a good number for us. That really is. It's a good number for us. We can make calls every hour on the hour. I, I don't have a problem with that. If we make 24 hours, make a call every hour, I'm good with that. Where I get concerned is, is when we make a call and five minutes later, we have another call on top of it. Because then I can't make that call. That's where, here again, that duty chief comes in and responds to that call. If it's a medical emergency here and a medical emergency there, we split up and we go that way. That's how we try to solve that problem. But as things get busier and we start getting more and more on top of one another, that's what our concerns are for that. Do I have another slide? Is that it? Yes. We'll go to some PDFs here. Trying to, I, I got to see them so I'll know which ones. Go to the first one, whichever one's first. I'm done with this, I think. Do we have a PDF? Oh, that's the PDF? There's another PDF in there. There's two more. So... There's my one for that, and that breaks it down. That's just a, more of that. Let's go to incident type. So this is one of the things we started doing back in January. We divided the city into four different sections, and we've also divided the county into different sections. We've done that by precincts for the county. And for the city, we'll just call it northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest. And where we drew the line is where the line is right there as far as north is what divides us from north and south, and key is what divides us east and west. So you can look through here, and you can, you can see the different calls that we're making. But more importantly, look at the calls that we're making in here. So that first one, we had a few calls that did not get captured, and that's why you have 32 calls in there. But if you go to this next one, it'll talk about the northeast, and if you'll scroll through that a little bit more. Right there, we had, we have 80 calls in the northeast part of town. Now, that's going to be from north and key out that way. So there's not a lot of activity in that area. You've got 580 East, and you have a small part. You've got Badger Field. You've got Ace Hardware. You've got Country Inn, those types of things. But there's not a lot of residents in there. There's a few residents back in the east part, but there's not that many. And then we'll scroll down a little bit more, and we're going to go to the northwest. Remember, you had 80-something there. We're at 123. Now, that's going to be from north and key out that way. Lot of residential's in that area. Lot of residential in that area. Hospitals in that area, so we go there on fire alarms. You've got a nursing home in there. We go there on fire alarms. And then you've got Fawn Acres, and you've got the new Hillside Acres out there. You've also got Stone Valley in that area. So this is where we have a lot of people in there. These are all residences, though. Scroll down a little bit more, and we're going to look at the southeast area. We're in the southeast area. And I think we go a little bit more. Look at that number, 222. And this is all just since January. But keep in mind, the southeast area is where we're at. The square is in the southeast area. The good news is, the fire station's in the southeast area. So this, we're getting to those people within a recognized standard of time all the time. And we want all the calls to be in here because that helps our, our times to be low like that. But we get into the southwest area, and we're going to see that it's going to grow up there a little bit too. We're at 160. So the south part of town's the busier part of town, but it's because that's where people come in and out. That's where restaurants are. That's where the most of the activity happens in the city. And then we can go through the different precincts. You can, you can see that. We did those just strictly by what the county precincts are and everything like that. That is just for this year right there, starting in January. So when you see that 868 number there, you can see that, you can total up your different calls that are in there and everything. But historically, out of that 1,445 calls that we make, we're going to make about 300 calls out into the county. Keep in mind, once you go past Willis on, what is it, First Street and then Avenue B, that's county. There's a subdivision out there that makes a big loop, and there's a lot of homes in there, but that's a county. Yeah. Once you, once you go down Ridge, past the cemetery, you go, you don't go too far, then you're out into the county. So we make a lot of calls in the county, and we don't even know that we're in the county. Some of the newer guys, when they're filling out a report, they don't even know that, "You mean, that was a county call? That's a county call, but there was a fire hydrant right there. I know it. Aren't you glad?" So we get the benefits of a lot of things with that, and, and we enjoy making those calls. We were talking earlier, hey, when that, when those tones go off and they say, "We're going somewhere," we're going. It doesn't matter. All I need's an address. I went way out nearly to the bend today. And I, I'm going to keep going because that's somebody that needs some help, and that's what we're here for. Everybody within the fire department, I can assure you, they have a heart that they want to help people. If they didn't, they wouldn't be here doing it. I think that's all that I have.
Quick question, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Out of all the apparatus that we have in, in the building, how many of them are totally county-owned?
Five. You have three brush trucks, and then you have one pickup. And then you also have Rescue One, which is a, it's a... It's, they call it a rescue, but it's a four-man, it's a four-door cab. It has a pump on it. It actually has a PTO on it so that it can roll and pump, but it, it's the closest, it's in between a brush truck and a fire engine.
Who does the maintenance on those? Or who pays for the maintenance, I guess?
On all the county equipment? The county pays for all the, all the county equipment, yes. The, the volunteers are responsible for coming in and checking their equipment. They check it. They, they're, they're the ones looking at the air in the tires, the fuel in the tanks, all the hose lines and everything like that. They maintain all their equipment. They maintain their hose. Now, what we do is when we test our hose and our ladders, which we do once a year, the county tests their hose and ladder once a year. They come in, they do it all together. They do a pump test, ladder test, all at the same time. And then they, they know what's theirs. We know what's ours. And the, the vendor then sends us a bill for ours and sends them a bill for theirs, and they do that.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Chief.
You bet. Thank you. Thank you all.
Next item is City Manager's Operational Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few brief comments. I was asked to follow up on reservations of water that we currently have under contract with the Brazos River Authority. And you can see in my written report, it notes that we have about 5,500 acre-feet of water on revert, some sort of reserve status. What is, what does 550 acre-feet of water mean? That's about 4.9 million gallons of water a day. By example or by comparison, this July, we averaged about $2.2 million, million gallons of water being delivered through our points of entry per day. We have three contracts with BRA, one 3,000-acre-foot contract that expires in 2050, a 2,000-acre-foot contract that expires in '29, and then a 500-acre-foot contract expiring '24, '21. So they're all relatively long-term contracts. I do want to also remind you that in addition to water availability contracts with BRA, we also have several surface wa, surface and impounded water rights in Sulfur Creek. And these aren't, you know, you'll see that these have a priority date with them. Surface water in the state of Texas is first in time, first in right. So your priority date is extremely important, particularly if you get into drought conditions. I believe we have a couple of smaller ones, but 2970, 6.2 acre-feet, priority date of 1946. 2971 is for 3,760 acre-feet, that with a priority date of 1914. And 2972, 228 acre-feet with a priority date of 1963. The 1914 priority date, there's not a whole lot of water rights that exist before 1914. That is a, that is a very valuable priority date. Moving on, we also want to announce Larry Wilson has been promoted to Patrol Sergeant with the Lampasas Police Department. And Officer Garrett Bradley has been promoted to Sergeant Investigator. These promotions are really just a string in a succession line in, kind of fell into place after Chief Bailey resigned and retired. Investigator Roberts also took a job with the probation department. So these are kind of moving up the ladder. We will be, without the creation of the two SROs, I think Chief Cummings indicated previously that as soon as we get our folks out of field training, that we may only be one down, which is far better than a lot of other jurisdictions. Sales tax, August, about an 11% improvement over August last year. Year-to-date, the city is seeing about a 9.14% increase over the same period last year. So continued good news on sales tax. Drought watch, the BRA has notified the city. It's implemented Stage One. And this is what we've been doing anyway. We've tried to been sending out tips and encouragement for folks to conserve water. It's a voluntary reduction in water through public education, public notification. Customers have action taken. The BRA drought contingency plan and the city's drought contingency plan aren't aligned 100%. But when they, when they make this call, and it's something easy for us to do, we certainly want to try to encourage people to use the resource wisely. Business park, you have included in the packet Pay Application Number Four. And I think what it'll indicate to you is about 49% of the project is complete according to the pay applications. Of that, if you put, and I'm just using the ARPA allocation that we use for water wastewater. But if you look at that, that tends to tell you that about three-fourths of the water and wastewater infrastructure is complete, right? And it makes sense. You want to put pipe in the ground before you pave and provide curb and gutter and that sort of thing. They are still, I believe, a little bit ahead of schedule. One thing that you will notice kind of on this funding recap, and the reason I do a funding recap is because we want to know, okay, do we have enough loan funds to cover the cost of the project, basically? And so you can see that we're still pretty close. They do have some excess funds in operating reserves that can be drawn upon. But the one thing you will notice is that there was a change order that was about a $71,000 reduction in the contract price. Good thing normally, but all of that, a mo, a great majority of that was for water and wastewater. So it actually lowered the amount of eligible expenses that ARPA funds would cover. So it reduced our ARPA allocation by about $94,000 and actually increased the LEDC's inputs about $23,000. So it's, it's kind of odd. You think, okay, a savings is a good thing, and it is. It's just this happened to balance out where it took more of the ARPA funds and created a little bit more expense to the LEDC. Central Texas Water Supply Corp., I was kind of disappointed to, to hear that the Supreme Court of Texas did ask for a response. And again, it only takes one justice to request a response from the appeal that was filed by Central Texas. That is scheduled to be due September 12th, but I think a lot of times when these written responses are made, there may be 30, 30-day extension or a couple of 30-day extensions. We'll see how it goes. I think our team is certainly going to respond in a, in a fairly timely manner on it. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, let's do the video. Go ahead. Do you need to narrate?
Appreciate the music. Appreciate the music.
Very good.
Very good.
Can I ask one quick, excuse me? Can I ask one quick, quick question on that? When is, uh, County Road, uh, gonna be done? Okay.
You could've just stayed up here for Avenue C, but hopefully I can take care of that. Avenue C, uh, they are substantially complete. Uh, there are a few minor items on the punch list. Uh, that was a CDBG, uh, project, Community Development Block Grant. Those funds come through the Department of Ag. Uh, that called for about thirty-three-hundred linear feet of sewer line replacement. Uh, glad to have that project behind us. We'll have to come back now and do some work on the streets because of all the cuts that have been made. Hostess House, we did meet with, uh, Reliance Architecture briefly to talk about the one-hundred-percent design and development plans. We also wanted to take the opportunity to talk to them about a scheduling, a meeting with council at the Hostess House. And I think, uh, Mr. Naylor suggested that he'd like to fine-tune some of the estimates a little bit more and get to the fifty-percent, uh, construction plan set. And, uh, he felt like if we could schedule something in the next month, which gets budget kind of behind us and, and a couple of other things, it would be, uh, we'd like to do that. If, if council has a better date or better timeframe than others, but, uh, we're looking probably in the next, uh, four to six weeks, if possible. Check with Zach first on your schedule. I'll continue on as you look at your, maybe, maybe look at your, uh, calendars. Uh, the tank true-up, we did conduct at least, uh, the, the session one of the Georgetown Tank True-Up. Uh, again, the city has paid in a hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars into that, uh, portion of the shared expenses. It appears the initial true-up, uh, would, indicates that we'll probably owe, owe an additional twenty-thousand dollars, uh, or thereabouts. Uh, when you sit down and true-up, it, it's not always real clear exactly what expenses. Sometimes you say, "Okay, is, is this percentage account should be placed on this particular item, et cetera." So, we've still got a, a few things to work through. Uh, the good news is even though that we will likely have to pay in on the order of two-hundred-and-eight thousand, the project does remain forty-two thousand, almost forty-three thousand dollars, under the city's budgeted amount. Uh, Monica reports that the goal of the live day for the city's updated website is September sixth. New design, updated content and photographs. Uh, will also have spotlight section that'll highlight the attractions such as murals, sculptures and springs. Uh, and Monica and her team have been working on this for about a year, I would say, maybe a little longer. About a year. Short-term rentals, uh, we continue to gather information on short-term rentals in preparation. I think we will discuss it at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in September with possible, uh, formal consideration by the ordinance, uh, of an ordinance in October. That, we, we can't stress to council enough the many layers that are involved with a, a good ordinance. As, as those of you that have lived through the sign ordinance and subdivision update regulation ordinance, you know that as you begin to peel those layers back, there's, there are more and more questions that you really want to a, ask, ask, answer in a very clear, uh, ordinance. And some of the things related to short-term rentals, you know, include the density, the occupancy, the number of people you can have, uh, the parking, any limitations, contracted administration, which a lot of communities do, uh, neighborhood issues and concerns and, and not, and, uh, the hot collection, which a lot of communities do it, uh, through a third party. Um, the other thing that council may want to consider is h, having a separate public hearing on this, just to get some more public input on it. Um, staff, like to take the opportunity to recognize, uh, those employees who began their City of Lampasses careers in August. Delana Fritz, three years, Loopy Sharping, fifteen years, Sue Rowe, eleven years, Robin White, one year, Casey Schwarzer, thirteen years, Aaron Weiser, nine years, James Allen, twenty-six years. And also, we want to, uh, uh, thank Wayne for allowing us to take interim off of his title. Uh, I think Wayne initially was thinking that he, uh, you know, might be headed down the road. And he said, "I think I'm gonna stick around a little bit." And I said, "Well, let's at least take interim off of your title." So, we're pleased to announce, uh, the, uh, position of superintendent is, is filled now with, by Wayne Sanders. Happy to answer any questions. Are any dates that you want to look at? We can look at them later at the next meeting, if you like, but...
Monday, um, October third?
October third, Monday?
First Monday.
Let me, let me, let me see if that works with Antonio and, and his team and, uh... Uh, not necessarily, I think it's in that four to six week. Well, actually, it's more than... Yeah, it's, I think that's prior. Councilmember Kinney, is that? Okay. We'll fly it up the flagpole, and if we need to...
TMAO, is that the fifth?
Fifth, I think, third, fourth and fifth, something like that.
Want to get some dates from Antonio?
Yeah, we'll get some dates and we'll, we'll... We can play this game for a meeting or two and we'll, we'll get it sorted out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have no comments, other than to thank everyone for showing up. We have no unfinished business. New business, seven-point-one. Discussion and possible action concerning the proposed tax rate upon all property subject to taxation within the City of Lampasses, Texas, for the 2022 tax year for the use and support of the municipal government of the City of Lampasses for the fiscal year beginning October one, 2022, and ending September thirty, 2023. Apportioning said levy among the various funds and items for which revenue must be raised, including providing a sinking fund for the retirement of the bonded debt of the city.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is, um, to vote on the proposed tax rate for the City of Lampasses. Um, it is, the rate is gonna be above the no-new tax rate, which is formerly the effective rate. And it will be higher than the, I mean, I'm sorry, lower than the voter-approved rate, um, which used to be the old rollback rate. So, we are proposing point-three-one-five-six as our tax rate.
Be aware that we need to have a recorded roll-call vote.
Yes, ma'am, it does have to be a recorded vote.
Is there specific wording?
Not a wording on the motion, no, if you just want to approve.
Move to approve the, uh...
The proposed tax rate and then...
Proposed tax rate.
Say what the tax rate is.
Zero-point-three-one-five-six for the City of Lampasses fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Have a motion?
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Good. Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Keel?
Aye.
Mayor Prokton Williamson?
Agree.
Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven-point-two. Discussion and possible action concerning the scheduling of one public hearing regarding the proposed tax rate upon which all property subject to taxation within the City of Lampasses, Texas, for the 2022 tax year for the use and support of the municipal government of the City of Lampasses for the fiscal year beginning October one, 2022, ending September thirty, 2023. Apportioning said levy among the various funds and items for which revenue must be raised, including providing a sinking, sinking fund for the retirement of the bonded debt of the city.
Move to schedule one public hearing on the proposed tax rate.
What day would you like to schedule the public hearing? Is what we need to decide, whether the sixth or seventh or the eighth, um, would qualify as what day that the public hearing could be held. So, um, whatever date y'all want to decide on.
We're going to adopt it on September twelfth, so one of the sixth, seventh or eighth to have the public hearing.
So, move to schedule one public hearing on the proposed tax rate for September seventh at...
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty PM in the Cowper Building. And the meeting to vote on the tax rate will be Monday, September twelfth, 2022, at six PM.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, this, does, this need to be recorded as well?
No.
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 Thank you.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Avon.
Seven-point-three. Discussion and possible action regarding the inter-local agreement with Lampasses County regarding emergency medical dispatch services.
Uh, Mayor and Council, what we have offered, uh, on this agenda cover is, uh, a possible, two motions. One would be consider a motion to authorize the city manager in consultation with city attorney to negotiate and finalize the inter-local agreement by and between the City of Lampasses and Lampasses for emergency medical dispatch service, or to bring it back to you, uh, in terms of the second motion, uh, at the next meeting. And the, the two options, uh, should be considered in terms of the, the comfort level you have with, uh, the terms, however you so discuss on this agenda item. We had discussed a, uh, the possibility of a, a specific, uh, budget-neutral for year one, and then setting a date, uh, for a negotiation or discussion about how costs could be shared in consideration of also some of the services that our FD provides out into the county as well. So, uh, based on whatever your comfort level is, we'd be happy to either take this and run with it under those, uh, terms, or bring it back to you at the next meeting.
Move to authorize the city manager in consultation with the city attorney to finalize the draft inter-local agreement and return to council for consideration.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven-point-four. Discussion and possible action regarding the inter-local agreement with Lampasses Independent School District regarding school resource officers, SRO.
Uh, again, Mayor and Council, this is a similar consideration or recommendation. Uh, one would allow us to administratively negotiate and finalize. The other would be to bring it back to you at the next meeting. Uh, I think, again, the terms as, uh, count, as staff understand it, is that council would like to consider... I think the big, the, the big question is, is it a hundred percent, seventy-five percent, or is it a hundred percent, a hundred percent? And certainly, we would be happy to go whichever way you'd like, as well as bring it back to you at the next meeting, if you'd like that as well.
Move to authorize the city manager in consultation with the city attorney to finalize the draft inter-local agreement and return to council for consideration, and to request a hundred percent coverage from LISD on both officers for salary.
Second.
Is that clear? I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
Uh, that's a three-year.
Three years.
The, uh, the SRO agreement, we would probably do for, I think, a minimum of three.
Okay.
Anyone else? Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. Uh, nay, sorry.
Understood, thank you, Council.
Can I also make a motion to amend that to include a three-year contract? Or three-year agreement?
You, you might want to just make a second motion.
Okay, let's do a second one.
I don't think you want to amend, yeah, you don't need to amend it, it's already passed. I would probably just...
I move, uh, for the city manager in consultation with the city attorney to finalize draft inter-local agreement and return to city council for consideration, and also to request a three-year agreement.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir. Seven-point-five. Discussion and possible action regarding procurement of two 2023 Ford Police Interceptor vehicles for school resource officers, SRO. Chief Cummings?
Mayor and Council, thank you. As, uh, the manager previously discussed, if we, uh, went ahead and ordered these vehicles now, uh, as of last week's information, uh, with Salisbury, which we normally order these fleet vehicles out of, um, northeast of Houston, it would probably be around late April, early May is their estimate before we would get them. Uh, right now, completely decked out with everything they would need, it would be eighty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents a piece. For two of them, that'd be one thousand, excuse me, one-hundred-sixty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. Uh, and mind you, because they're two brand-new ones, often when we take a fleet vehicle off and replace it with a new one, we can get some equipment off the old one. Hopefully, a radio still works, hopefully a camera, hopefully radar. Sometimes, one of those might not work and we have to buy a new one. But seldom do we have to replace everything completely. But since these are two additions to the fleet, we don't have any equipment to rob off an old vehicle. So, uh, that is a little more than what we budgeted for the regular police vehicle that we would be replacing this year that's in our budget.
I move to approve the purchase of two 2023 Ford Police Interceptor vehicles for the two new school resource officers in amount not to exceed a hundred-and-seventy thousand.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any questions, any comments?
So, if we vote on, on this to approve this right now, it takes out any, or it takes out negotiating power with talking about these salaries. Would you agree?
I, I can't speak for the school, nor have I talked to the school yet about council's direction.
I guess the big question is, if we wait until we have that agreement with the school, do you foresee the cost going up in that amount of time?
Well, in today's economy, it's just, it's hard to tell. Everything seems like it's going up really quick. Things may be slowing a little, I just, I can't tell you. It's so hard, and vehicles are so odd compared to everything else in the economy.
Can they give you an estimate, the, the main, the actual, where are you getting them out in Salisbury?
This information is from Salisbury, yes. But we have traditionally got most of our fleet vehicles for the last, uh, probably three, four, or five years, you know, northeast of Houston, who are the largest distributor of the packaged-out police vehicles in the state.
I think, I think most of the, uh, uh, vehicles, they'll, most, most of the budgets of the cities will, will hit October one, and those vehicles may be real hard to find. Uh, I think we probably ought to go ahead.
I, I think the, the, I think the district will be hopefully very open to, to that. And I mean, we're talking about a relatively, uh, small difference compared to the, uh, the cost of the vehicles and equipping, but I can't, I can't speak for them contractually.
And my only hesitation is, is going through and making this hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar commitment before we actually have an agreement sewn up. That's, that's my only hesitation.
Sure.
The only thing I could offer is if, uh, these won't be coming in till next, uh, April or May, if something odd happened and there was... if something odd happened and there was a divide between the council and the school over these, we'll be working on budget next year to order two vehicles in my schedule, in our schedule now. And mind you, they would be a little early, but...
You can put them to use, is what you're saying?
Yes, we will replace two vehicles by schedule next year in the budget that we would be talking about at this time, just for general police services, so...
So we're gonna need them.
They would be a little early, but we would be asking for them within, you know, probably, they'd be about six to eight months early, and of course, there would be, so...
And likely a non-issue, but just likely not going to be an issue, I wouldn't imagine, but...
They would be needed one way or the other by us, we would be having to figure out how to purchase them a few months prior than we normally would, and then they would be put to use because we'll be asking for two in the regular police budget next year.
Any other comments? I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Seven point six, discussion and possible action regarding a new Holt Caterpillar 926M wheel loader and integrated tool carriers in the amount of $237,550.
Mayor, council, thank you. This is one, let me give you a little bit of background about the current loader we have, and if folks aren't familiar with loaders, they're the very large pieces of equipment with a huge bucket, usually moving quite a bit of dirt, various things. Currently, the one we have is a 2008, it resides with our streets department. It's a 2008 CAT 924G, which is a little bit smaller than the Caterpillar that we'd requested in this quote, and it's got about 8,731 hours approximately, maybe unused a day, so a little more than that. But this piece of equipment is used consistently, you know, day in, day out, I think the hours kind of show that. This has had some work in past years, I think we've spent about $20,000 doing some work to the engine of the existing loader, with probably, looking at it probably another $20,000 worth of repairs, starting to lose power again, the main piston that lifts the bucket, it's fairly, is, needs to be rebuilt. I've actually looked at this piece of equipment, so I did reach out to Caterpillar to get a cost on a new one with some various options. This particular one here is a 926M, like I mentioned, is a little bit bigger. It comes with integrated tool carriers, which basically means you can swap components off, so it'll have forks, you can take the bucket off, you can put a broom on the front to sweep the streets, there's some other things you can do with it. I think one of the big benefits of this particular model being a little bit larger than what we have now, we have what's called an asphalt zipper that we use, it goes, slides into the bucket, and then it chains down to the bucket, and it's basically a machine that you'll see that the paving companies use, they have, you know, they're mounted on trucks and that's all they do. This one actually sits in the bucket, and it's a wheel that has the teeth on it that grinds up the pavement, so doing projects and being able to do, you know, more projects, hopefully with this loader. One of the things that, and one of the main reasons, and I think Councilmember Morris brought this up just a minute ago with the PD vehicles, speaking with CAT, they're 12 to 14 months out before delivery. So this is a CIP item that was on the CIP for, I believe it was 24, 25, so we're a little bit ahead of that. The goal was to hopefully get an order in and have it by the next October or sometime after that, but to basically get our names on the list, knowing that this piece of equipment had already been, you know, identified in the CIP as one that needed to be replaced. Some of the, really the benefit, and one of the things we were looking at, we have a CAT motor grader that the lease is actually up October 30th of this year, so we've been working with Holt CAT, they came down, one of their vendor reps that does inspections on this type of equipment came and looked at our grader, based on the hours, the usage, the shape that it was in, just like a used car, they came down and gave us a price. So we have two options on that motor grader, one is to turn back the lease at the end, we can turn it in, or we can move to some sort of balloon pavement, or Holt CAT has opted to, based on the shape that it's in, purchase it from us. So it would be, after they pay what's owed left on it, $83,000 approximately, $83,000 would be then, you know, paid back to the city if we basically turn around and sell that to Holt CAT, who we were leasing it from. So we were looking at using that $83,000, as well as, we had budgeted, the lease is about 27, I believe it's about $2,760, somewhere in there, that we pay a month on the motor grader now that we're turning back in. We had budgeted it throughout the year, thinking we may lease another one, we weren't sure. We're not going to lease another piece of equipment like that, we'll most likely rent that in the future as we need it, just due to the low hours and the low use. But it also added $30,000 to that budget approximately that we'll have in store too when we hit the next budget cycle, so approximately $125,000 would be paid from the streets capital outlay next October, if that's when it comes in, in that fiscal year. We looked at, the interest rates out there now are climbing, and so we were looking at making this a purchase instead of a lease like we've done in the past. Most loaders, you're 10 to 12 years before you do major maintenance, which is kind of where we're at on the other one now. So the request would be, even though it's an unbudgeted item, it would be to, you know, purchase this, get us on the list for the next budget year to hopefully receive it. I believe it does.
If we could get a motion, then we could have some additional...
Make a motion to approve a new Holt Caterpillar 926M wheel loader and integrated tool carriers in the amount of $237,550.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, questions?
I have a quick question, Ryan. So when you're looking at the lease or purchase on there, so whenever you got a lease, Holt CAT covers all the maintenance on that, or...
They can, so they did give us that option because I'd requested that, so they can do the service. It's an added cost, I think on this particular model, it went from $237,550 to $256,000 and some change to have the maintenance done, so most likely, we would just pay that out of a maintenance budget as needed, you know, based on the hours, it's all based on the hours.
Is there any benefit to the city on a lease purchase, purchase tax benefit or anything? No? Interest is the...
Yeah, interest was the...
Pardon me?
Interest is the issue.
Interest is an issue.
Yeah, interest over the five-year term was about $40,000.
It's a unit that's used every day.
Yeah, it's... Yeah, we sit at the collection center there too for moving waste, or whatever we need to, tree limbs, which is used every day by a lot of departments.
And it's a year unlimited hour warranty and, what, 84-month, 5,000-hour powertrain?
That's correct.
And so this gets you on the waiting list, does it also keep that price?
Yes, that will lock us in, and talking with CAT Holt rep, Blake Wilson is our rep, he did mention, because I asked him a couple different things about when it comes in, if for some reason it came in in this budget cycle, let's say next summer for some reason it came in early, they have enough other Caterpillar companies that they work with, that this is an item that everybody's on the list for, so it's kind of, he kind of, he told me, it's basically like the NFL draft, we can move up or down, so if it comes in early, we can opt to say, we want to wait until October, we'll take that next one, and so another Caterpillar company would take that one, and then when the next one comes in, in line, then we would take that, so we can kind of hopefully manage that, that would be the goal.
Any other comments or questions? I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir. Seven point seven. Discussion and possible action regarding the award of a bid to Larson Construction in an amount not to exceed $51,583 for the Hannah Spring Wall project, subject to assessment of qualifications, bonding, and insurance. Thank you.
Mayor and council, so at council's recommendation, we put this project out to bid again. We had multiple contractors that showed some interest in this and picked up packets, however, we only had one contractor that actually submitted a bid, which is Mike Larson Company out of Nederwald, and he provided multiple references who I contacted personally, and I only got feedback from one of those references. It seems like he's a pretty reputable contractor, pretty competent contractor, however, he doesn't show any expertise, or doesn't, his work history doesn't show any expertise in masonry, or any of these fields that we're looking for. What I just handed you is the recommendation from the structural engineer. Also, this project has remained on just about every Parks Board agenda, as it has council. At last Thursday's meeting, they voted unanimously to leave that wall intact. The Parks Board did, yes. Just for your info. And I think that Ryan has talked to J.C. as well, I don't know what her, what that conversation was, but Ryan can probably give you...
I did talk to the city attorney, just to kind of make sure we run through the pages on what was submitted to us by the Larson Contract Company. There were a few things that she identified, there was some workers' comp information that was missing on the certification liability, and then there was another reference to some rental property and some things in there. I think the bigger concern from her standpoint, like TML, was depending on the contractor and their expertise level, if there's any kind of damage, so you don't know for sure until you get into the wall, you know, we do know it's dry stacked rock below that wall, but until you get into that, and depending on the contractor's capabilities, if that's damaged and causes any kind of damage to the spring, or it could result in much more cost to the city, depending on, you know, if that contractor's competent enough to make those repairs, if there's, you know, some sort of concern that comes out of that, was her biggest concern. And knowing that some of the prior estimates that we had gotten were significantly higher, while we didn't exactly explain how we wanted you to do the construction, we did notify in that documentation for bid that there could be some permits required, being that it's a spring, none of the debris can fall in there, there's some requirements that I think some of the other contractors associated with their bid, maybe they were thinking of doing it a different way versus this one, so, well, I just wanted to make sure that we kind of vetted everything that we could, and so the city attorney was kind of the last step. She did say if council would like to go forward with it before that decision's made, that we need to get TML's involvement as well, and they have been involved, and Chris and those worked with them pretty close.
They have. And also, like the structural engineer is...
They're looking at putting piers in and building a wall around that wall.
Let me make a motion real quick so we can talk about it.
Yeah.
So I'd move to reject the bid from Mike Larson Company and direct staff to install that panel fencing with direction on the wall, to be discussed at a future city council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Hang on, I didn't hear what you said.
To install the fence.
Reject, okay.
So, just so that I make myself clear, I've spoken to Chris two or three times, and I believe that the fencing is of such a design that at some later date, we can come in, remove a panel or two, whatever's needed, and then work on the wall as needed.
We opted for the bolt-up, or bolt-up fencing because of that, so we can come back at a later date if needed, remove a few panels and work on the wall as needed.
And is everyone comfortable with that?
So it gives room to go back and we can figure out some other contributors and maybe have a better plan than someone that doesn't maybe have a whole lot of experience doing this and put us all in a bad spot?
Right.
Mr. Kavnis, did you want to say something?
Yes, me too, my... Pudelle Wallace, head of the Historical Commission, couldn't be here tonight, so she kind of deputized me, we had a commission meeting this afternoon and kind of talked about this.
Can you talk up a little bit?
Yeah, I'm not used to microphones like this. The Historical Commission is willing, if the city wants to take this off their plate and doesn't want to have to find the money to pay for it, the Historical Commission is willing to take it on as a project, if the city would transfer responsibility for this project to us, and raise the funds necessary to take the wall down to the original foundational wall like it appeared in the 19th and early 20th centuries.
Which, I don't think we can pass off the responsibility, I think it can only be financial.
Excuse me?
I don't think we can pass off the responsibility to another group, I think it can only be a financial contribution from that group to the project.
Well, we would be willing to raise the funds if we had control of the actual historic preservation process, and we've oversaw the restoration of the courthouse, so we have institutional experience with extensive renovations and things.
And that could be discussed with us going ahead and putting the fence up?
If you want, if you want, we brother, you didn't, because the poles in the concrete are going to be an obstacle to taking the wall down, but if you really, if you think it's necessary...
Mr. Anker has assured us that at any point, those panels can be undone.
Right, but the poles will be in concrete that the panels will be attached to. We can, we could work around those if you, if you think it's necessary to go ahead and put the fence up now before we can get our ducks in a row and...
You guys had talked too about a historical fence, could you use the same?
We haven't, we haven't, we haven't seen the fence that was purchased, but we would consider with, we would consider purchasing our own if the one that's been purchased already is not historically appropriate, and we'd pay for anything, any new fence. But we feel strongly that this historic, this is one of the handful of most historic sites in the city, and indeed, it's the reason the city's here. So we feel strongly that this needs to be done, and we will be happy to accept responsibility if you want to transfer to us.
We've discussed that we cannot turn over the responsibility to another entity, it's a city asset, but we can discuss, can we not finally, that they could contribute to the cost at some later date after we've installed the fence?
That's correct, mayor, as you recall, and I believe it was after a conversation you had with Mr. Kavnis, that we sent a series of questions to the city attorney regarding this very item, which was, I believe, answered fully to council at that time, and that wasn't more than three or four meetings ago. So I would defer back to J.C.'s original opinion on this in that regard.
Well, I saw the memo, and I was afraid there was a miscommunication, because the memo addressed transferring responsibility to a private nonprofit, Heritage Lampasas, not to another governmental entity, because the problem that was identified was that it could be seen as an attempt by the city to avoid complying with the protocols for bids and things for a government project.
I believe at that time, we also included the Historical Commission with J.C.
And that was one of several issues that was referenced, that wasn't the singular issue that she referenced. At that time, I also communicated to council in the cover sheet that I did not ask for a written opinion from J.C. in deference to trying to save some legal expense, however, if council so directs, I'd be happy to get a written opinion from J.C. on this as well.
And I was going to say, I'm not, I'm not against spending the money if it's done right, but my concern is that this contractor, even though we did get a bid, I mean, because there are funds out there, like, you know, for example, Fund 62 that could cover it, it's not to me a matter of the money, it's a matter of getting a qualified...
Right, and I...
And because those springs were so important.
I agree with that, I would agree with that completely. Before you rejected this bid, I was going to ask that you make sure that this company has experience working with historic masonry before you accept the bid.
Right, and I'm not, I'm personally not comfortable with this company.
Well, I just, I'm afraid you'll just, it would shelve the whole project, but if you continue finding somebody who's qualified, that's great.
I didn't see anything that would qualify them in their references, at all, anywhere close. And I would like to say, from a standpoint of a written opinion, is regarding liability from the city attorney, I... I would like to see a, something that recuses us if it can be. If not, she needs to tell us, and it needs to be something that we request. I think that's, that needs to cover the council up here, to get a written opinion from the city attorney.
But I don't think that we're trying to go against what we, what we've all been talking about. Everyone wants that highlighted out there. It's just.
If there is, if there is a written opinion, I'd like to. I'd like to, if there's a reason why the city would be barred from transferring responsibility, just for the project, to another governmental entity, the commission, I'd kind of like to see the reasoning behind that.
Can I, can I read a note from, from Claudell Wallace that she sent me this afternoon? And kind of goes along with what you're talking about, and it, I can understand it a whole lot better, and I think she did a good job. Hannah Springs Restoration, Lampassus County Historical Commission will agree. Number one, to oversee restoration of Hannah Springs to its original structure in the eighteen seventies. Do the fundraiser to cover the cost of reconstruction. Apply for state consent to move historical markers to the springs. The Lampassus Historical Mission Restoration will be contingent upon the city of Lampassus withdrawing from the project, backed by the letter or email from the council. A committee will be formed to be responsible for guiding the project from start to finish. The committee will determine and agree on the final goals, formulate a plan as to how the goals will be met, and to solicit qualified bids from providers. Lampassus Historical Commission will address the city's concerns, such as water qualities, issues, and flooding before the project begins. Fencing must be historical representation or as close to possible in accordance with the eighteen seventies era photo. Once the Lampassus Historical Commission completes the restore, restoration, the City Parks and Recreation Department will assume all maintenance.
Yes, that's consistent with my discussions.
We can't just give it away and then take it back. I mean, there's liability. But there's, no, one second. There's liabilities issues with that. That's why we went through our city attorney. That's why we've asked for an opinion. I do agree that we should get a written opinion on this, so we actually have the letter of the law here. But, of course, in a perfect world, that sounds great. Here you go. Get it done, and we'll take it back over. But you know as well as I do, it's not that cut and dry when it comes down to legalities, especially with, with a government entity.
Right, well, between, arrangement between two different governmental entities. And we have, the commission has our own set of required protocols, which, which, of course, we would comply. But yes, we, let's wait and see what the written opinion says before we discuss it, because it's speculation.
Neither one of us want to get in a bad issue here or in a bad spot, and I don't think either organization wants to get in a bad spot. I think we all need to work together with this and make sure we're just doing it properly.
Right, no, we, we, we would like to. We, we're offering to help out the city. This, this has been an albatross around your neck for a long time, and we're offering to take it away.
Excuse me, I think Ms. Bouldinghouse has something she'd like to say. We're trying to keep everybody to a couple or three minutes.
I just want to clarify what I was hearing the council say. That the fencing that you're talking about, putting a replacement board is out on the perimeter right now. But being temporary fencing that has been bought, settled in power. So it'll be settled in power.
Yes.
While the rest of this issue can be resolved.
Correct.
Then we can.
Whatever else we can come up with, you know, having meaning to compromise with what we want is totally correct. The best we can do with the safety issue, within the parameter that the city council needs to operate under. I mean, I'm going to clarify, that's what I was hearing you folks say.
That's what we said.
Absolutely.
Excuse me again, Chris has this group, have they seen the letter from the structural engineer who definitely says it's not an issue, you shouldn't be doing it?
Uh, which group are we talking about?
Uh, the Historical Commission.
No, we have not provided them a letter.
Is that something we can share with them?
Yes, ma'am.
Just so that they understand where we're coming from?
Communication between Chris and our committee or Henry or, if communication is the best way to explain the issue.
Exactly, absolutely.
Well, and.
We're open to that. We just didn't want to go full nosing ahead with something that's not appropriate.
That's, that's what we're doing. We're, we're stopping, and we're going to put the fence up for safety's sake, and then we're going to regroup.
And I, I mean, I say personally, and I think we've got some agreement up here, that no one wants us to fall off the radar. Like, just got to get something going right now, and then we can put our heads together and figure out the best way to get everyone on the same page and happy.
Well, and that, you know, I, I believe that these springs, and the more that I've dived into these springs, you know, I think it's a great, great asset to our community. And I think it's an important for us all to try to work together to, to get to where we need to be, to put up these wayfinding signs where we can draw people in. I mean, for the last hundred and fifty years, people have been coming to Lampassus because of these springs. And, you know, as I've dug into it and talked to a lot of old timers, it, it's important. And I'd, I'd like to see us work together on it. And I, and I don't know if we can give Chris the authority to go ahead and put the wa, the, the fence around it right now.
There's a motion and a second right now. We've got a motion and a second right now.
Actually, what I would have to do is go back and get revised quotes on the installation of the fencing. It's been several months since we had got those quotes, so.
You've already got the fence, so.
We have purchased the fence.
Is there a picture of the fence from where you ordered it? I mean, you can not even say.
I thought, I thought you guys saw it originally.
We can provide that. Also, we have the fence at our shop down on Spring Street, so anytime y'all want to stop by and see it, I'll wrap me in. We can do that.
And that's communication tool that we have had open, which is necessarily, we didn't know it was open.
Yeah, we'd like to be there. And the commission wants to help. I mean, we're not going to be obstructive.
Okay.
Time-wise, as far as funding goes, I mean, would you have funds within the next two months, three months, next year? What? Okay, so we're not going to kick this can down the road.
Finley, does Chris need another agenda item to get bids, or does this go with that? Can he, with this motion, can he?
We just.
To install bids.
For installation?
For the installation of the fence. He just said he needed a bid now.
I would, I would take action on this motion and then have a separate motion to direct the staff to do that.
Okay, so we do have a motion to reject the bid from Larson. Just recap this, and we're going to direct Parks to put the fence up. We had a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we will have a second.
It's not temporary. It's, it's permanent.
It's got panels, so you can take it down. Chris, can you answer that question for Ms. Bouldinghouse?
Chris, how far away from the wall are we talking about?
So the three-inch square tube and post, every eight feet will be approximately ten inches from the rock wall. But it'll just be a three-inch post standing there. You could, you can unbolt every panel and remove the entire fence except for the upright that holds it in place. It would just be an upright every eight feet, which would, should in no way hinder anyone from working on that rock wall once the panels are removed.
Because I've looked at it most recently, because of steep incline going up to that area.
Could you explain the incline?
I can. So that, the reason for this upper wall is because that dirt was built up, built up there, because the wall that's underground right now was, so they were having flood issues in that spring. Every time it would flood, they would have to clean the spring out, so they raised the ground with it. That's the reason for that incline. And then they raised the wall three foot above that, which is what's in contention right now.
I'm, I'm thinking in terms of being able to view the springs.
Right, so, there is another alternative. It's not really an alternative. I've had it in the CIP since two thousand seventeen.
Please share.
In two thousand seventeen, I put in the CIP to replace the fencing around that spring with wrought iron fencing, which, which is what we're doing now, and include an observation platform constructed of concrete with a rock veneer. Where you, if, if the ultimate goal is to be able to walk up and look in that spring, we could, we could install the fence we've got now, build the observation platform. You could get up on that platform, look in the spring, but in no way can you access that spring.
And that's our goal, is to make sure no one can access that spring?
As a Parks Department, and ultimately, my obligation is to the city of Lampassus and everybody that visits our parks, is safety. We don't want anybody getting in that spring. If you did the obs, observation platform, it would eliminate that problem.
The, the goal is for, the primary goal is for the Historical Commission is concerned is historic restoration, to restore the springs.
It should be safety as well. I hope you use that word when you're talking.
Yes, that's, that's the, the first goal, historic restoration. The second goal is to improve the appearance of the whole park. And if you can see that water, the clear, crystal clear water in the spring from all parts of the park, that was, that was, that was the case historically, that one of the eighteen ninety-one newspaper articles that I have that discusses and describes Hannah Springs talks about the bath house. And then it says, outside the bath house, there is a pool of about sixty feet in diameter with the clearest, most crystal-like spring water in it. It is not used for bathing, but is the focus of attention of all visitors to the area. So we want to get back to that point, and observation deck probably wouldn't really do that. And the third is safety.
There's been a motion and a second, and we voted on this last item. We have the next item and new business coming up, but we've also, one second. It was just to put this fence up and then for us to get together to discuss moving forward, which we can do on a further agenda. We can just direct staff to put this on here. We get another report from Mr. Iker, and we can move on. But thing is, there's been a motion and a second. We voted on it. We're moving on to the next, the next.
May I, the safety issue has been raised. Can I just finish with that? Taking the wall down is going to enhance the safety of the springs, because what keeps people out is the fence, the wrought iron fence. The wall itself doesn't keep anybody out.
We're, we're hoping that when you all, as a group, look at the structural engineer's letter, you will come to understand a little bit better what we need to do with our safety issues. The times have changed from the eighteen nineties.
I, I understand that, but, but let me, safety could be our initial, it could be the most important reason, because right now.
But right now, as Mr. Moore says, we do need to move on. We appreciate all your expertise.
But let me, let me just finish, please, just my one issue. The, if, if an adult, and we all know that any kind of fence is not going to keep out a determined or drunk or crazy individual. If they get in there, and they're likely to eventually, right now, they can't get out, because being in the water, they can't reach up to the top of the wall to lift themselves out. With the wall lowered to the level of the original historic wall, they can reach up and pull themselves out. So it will be much safer with the wall removed.
That will be a discussion when we all get together. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris and Ryan, for that.
Thank you.
We had a motion. We have a second. We voted, and we have a second motion.
Apparently, they're talking about the second one. We go ahead and get bids for the fence.
For the installation.
Installation of the fence.
If you'll just make that motion, that'd be great. We're, we're going to give you the authority to go out for bids and put the fence up.
Okay, actually, I just need to con, we've already gotten bids for the installation. I just don't know that they will honor those bids because they're so old. I need to get back with those contractors and see where we stand on that.
If they're not valid, we'll give you permission to go, go bid again. Let's do that right now.
Move to give Mr. Iker of the Parks Department permission to go seek bids for installation, to make sure we're still on track with our original motion for funding, and if not, to bring those numbers back to council.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? We're all on the same page? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven point eight, discussion and possible action concerning the first reading of an ordinance, amending Appendix A, B Schedule, Chapter eighty-two Utilities, Article five, Section H, Water Rate of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lampassus, Providing for an Increase in Rates to be Charged for Water Services by the City of Lampassus, Providing for Repeal of Conflicting Ordinances, Providing a Separability Clause, and Providing an Effective Date.
Good evening, mayor and council. Again, this is, as was previously discussed during workshop and during budget, the increase in the water rates, it is for water only, not for the sewer at this time. And it is an increase of two point two five in the base and ten cents per one thousand gallons.
If we could get a motion and a second, then we'll ask any questions. I'll remind you, you do not have to vote for your motion if you don't like.
Move to approve the ordinance for rate increase as discussed during the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three proposed budget workshop, of the base rate on the water rates to increase by two dollars and twenty-five cents, and a rate for one thousand gallons of an increase at ten cents per thousand gallons.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Do we have questions?
So again, like we talked about earlier, in most homes, you're talking about forty dollars or so a year increase.
Yes, if they use an average, like Finley had put out of the ten thousand, it's three twenty-five a month. A lot of homes don't use quite that much. Then your commercial account, accounts are going to be more than that, but yes.
Clearly, no one wants to raise any, any rates, but that's how we pay for things, isn't it?
It is, and it's been four years since we've raised any rates.
And we still under some of the other places around us, other communities?
Right, and we're still going to be competitive around, and as Finley had mentioned with the CO, the twenty twenty-two CO, your water debt is going to increase, and it's going to keep increasing over the years, and they're going to have to be paying more and more because of the projects. And so we will get to a point in the water, wastewater, where we're repaying so much debt that we're going to have a hard time funding everything else if we don't.
Yes, ma'am.
I got to the point, first of all, I've been against it. And I've talked with Finley a couple of three different times, and I talked to some of the, a couple of the councilmen earlier today, right before the meeting. And my understanding is if we don't do this to cover our debt in the future, we're probably looking at a higher rate increase next year.
That is correct.
And that's, I will reluctantly go ahead and go with it to keep from having to deal with a larger rate increase next year.
It was approached also about as new business comes to town, it's possible that those rates could be reduced when the money itself, the new water comes in.
We would, that would have to be a separate rate.
More likely, it would allow the rates to remain the same for a period of time, but we just want council to be aware that this, this doesn't take an entire two hundred and twenty thousand dollar budget deficit down to zero. This is, this takes a bite out of it, so we're, we're sensitive to what our residents will have to go through, but we think two smaller bites might be better than one large bite at this point.
When, when will this take, go into effect?
October first.
October the first.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Yvonne.
Thank you.
That concludes our program this afternoon. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Who'd adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's go home.